Good morning. It is Wednesday, August 16, 2023. We are kicking off our Clark County Council time this morning with two different work sessions. And so we will begin with the one on strategic plan for tourism. So I will ask staff to share their perspective on that topic.
Morning. Hello to the council. My name is Cliff Myers. I am president and CEO of Visit Vancouver USA. I'm here today to share a 10-year vision for the destination of Vancouver and Clark County, something we've been working on for quite a while and something we're incredibly excited about. Before I get started, I definitely wanted to say thank you to Councilor Marshall, who sits on our board in service to the council and so forth. She's been a tremendous champion of the work that we do. And you'll hear that some of the results of some of the suggestions she makes along the way has really been amazing and we're starting to see results. I also would like to say a quick thank you to Chair Bowerman, who served on our board previously, and thank you for your service as well, too. Okay, so about a year ago, we started off on a process in conjunction with the city. This is a project paid for by Lodging Tax, but it's really to help us define what this entire destination of Vancouver and Clark County is really about. We had a video. What I'll do today is I'll give you a quick overview of what Visit Vancouver does, and then we'll talk about the plan itself. We had a video, which we can go ahead and skip to the next slide there, that we are going to not show today because we had some technical difficulties. But what it does, we'll just go ahead and skip past that slide there, Rebecca, yeah. But what I do want to share with you is that Visit Vancouver acts as a sales and marketing agency on behalf of Clark County. Our job is to represent the visitor economy and to try and encourage it, because the visitor economy is one of those things, as you know, where people come to the area, enjoy themselves, and leave their tax dollars behind. It really helps out all of us in terms of the residents and citizens that live here. So in short, our job is to increase demand to Clark County in ways for people to come visit and however they would like to come, whether that's to visit local hotels, to stay in Airbnbs or short-term rentals, or to stay with their friends and family. Our job is to really magnify the appeal of our area and translate that into inspirational messages for people to come visit. So I think the next slide also shows a little bit of some of the samples of our work. You can see the things that we are doing currently right now. In terms of up in the upper right-hand corner, we have a Clark County Wine Trail, which is a digital pass program which allows people to move around the county and go to the different amenities that we have. And you can see, we also do local dining programs called Dine the Coove. We produce those downtown walking maps on the left, which are going to be expanded for different districts around the entire county. And in the lower right-hand corner, you can see our current visitor magazine, which is a really, really nice piece that has long shelf life, that really appeals to a lot of different audiences, and one of our primary distribution pieces. And so let's go to the next slide as well. We're measured every which way but sideways. It's one of those things where accountability and transparency is built into the type of work we do. You can see the different measurements, the high-level measurements there, that we take to make sure that the efforts we're taking are producing results. In general, I would tell you that the translation for ROI in terms of the work we do is about 10 to 1. For every dollar that we spend, we can show estimated economic impact of 10 to 1 for those dollars. And so that's the type of work that we do, and you can see the measurements of it behind it. And I think there may be one more slide before we get into the plan? Maybe that's it. Also, here's how it rolls up. The Clark County visitor economy in 2022, we had over 5 million visitors to the county last year. We currently have a little bit over 5% of the visitation in the entire state, 7,300 jobs, almost $96 million in state and local taxes generated. This is big business, what we're doing, and it's our job to try and magnify that. Let's go to the next slide. So as I said, we undertook a project last year called a Destination Master Plan for the city and county. And as I was walking over here today, I kind of think of it, maybe we should be calling this maybe a Destination Stewardship Plan. You know, master plan kind of insinuates, oh, we have all the answers, and oh, this is exactly what we should do. This is a stewardship plan to try and make sure that we all collaborate and we all move together in the same direction on behalf of all of us. And so let's get into it. Go to the next slide, please. All right, the project objectives. What we were trying to get done there was to, first of all, kind of facilitate an inclusive process. We want to make sure that we heard from a lot of people. I'll talk to you about the engagement in just a minute. But we had a lot of traditional and non-traditional stakeholders that really gave voice to this project. And we also wanted to provide an aligned roadmap for the hospitality industry here locally. Right now, hospitality doesn't really appear too many places in long-term planning documents. This is an opportunity for us to try and make that mark so that we can represent our interests on behalf of the hospitality industry as well, too. It also really kind of generates new ideas, new responsible ideas, to improve the visitor experience. You know, we all think and know it's a wonderful place to live here in Clark County, but maybe we need a few more things to do, a few more attractions, a few more ways for us to connect people to the outdoors here locally and things like that. The plan addresses that. We also needed to analyze new funding opportunities. This project was funded by Lodging Tax, as I said, through the city of Vancouver, but we wanted to make sure that we understand that this is one of those things where we need to look for alternative revenue sources outside of municipalities, outside of counties, and this plan allows us to do that as well, too. But really, really important to me is to make sure that we're implementing the plan and also guiding success. It's a 10-year plan. It's one of those things where we didn't spend all this effort to put a plan on a shelf and have it sit there and collect dust. What we'll do there at the very end, I'll show you how this plan will be guided and how we'll be able to be transparent about the progress we make along the way. So let's go to the next slide. Let's talk about engagement. This amounts to about 750 different local residents, citizens, and stakeholders that have given input, and they are reflected in this plan. It starts kind of at the bottom with what that thing says, 123 Destination Next Assessment. That takes about a half an hour. Those are done by industry stakeholders. And so that's people that really have skin in the game here locally and so forth, and that addresses a lot of different national trends and things like that. We have the feedback of that. It's incorporated here as well, too. 607 residents and citizens took part in this plan. They gave their feedback and their priorities, their ideas of what they think is really important to us. We had focus groups, interviews. And then on top of that is the 16-member steering committee, which you'll hear more about here in just a little bit. That is our guiding force for the work. Of course, we're utilizing our Board of Directors to make sure they're in line, aligned with the work that we're doing here in this project. But we pulled together a really, really important group of people with private industry stakeholders, again, from the hospitality industry, representing hotel developers and the wineries, breweries, restaurants in this stakeholder group. But also, we have city representatives. We have our board representative. We have the port, VDA, the chamber, CREDC, the farmers market, the historic trust, as well as representatives from the state tourism office here for Washington State. And that group is really, really engaged with this work. I will be meeting with that group continually. They've agreed to continue on with this work for the next 10 years. I'll meet with them. They'll help me prioritize the work, as I'll explain it here shortly. So let's go to the next slide. This work produced some really, really interesting things. This is a vision statement for the master plan. And you can see, in 2033, this is the best place to live in the Pacific Northwest. And I will tell you, this is a very aspirational and very inspirational statement, without a question, right? But it acts as a filter for this work to go through. If the work and the initiatives and the goals behind this are not pointing us towards that goal, then we're not going to do them. It's not the path we'll be taking. And that is the collective vision of the engagement on the previous slide. And that statement, again, kind of guides the overall arching focus of the plan. Then below that would be your goals on the next slide. The work came out with five different goals. You can see there, and I'll read these to you. The first one is develop experiential infrastructure. That speaks to the idea of things to do. Engage locals. Engage locals, to me, as I'll talk about more in just a moment, really is pivoting our work. We used to say, if you asked me those questions 10 years ago, it'd have said, you know, what we do really is designed for the outer markets. We speak to the local populations around us and try and get them to come here. We're flipping that on its head. It's really important for us to engage our citizens and know what their priorities are, know what their visions are for the future, and to really measure that over time. So that's part of what we'll be doing, too. Enhance access mobility and ease of movement for people of all abilities. It's important for locals as well as visitors to be able to move around this area without impediments and so forth. This idea, the goal number three speaks a little bit to that and how we can encourage those types of things. Goal number four, strengthen outdoor recreation tourism opportunities. Connect all people with the outdoors. It's no secret that the outdoors here is amazing. I'm a relatively new resident of the West Coast and the Pacific Northwest. Only been here for four years, and I am just continually amazed at everything all around us. But we need to make sure that people are aware of it, the locals, the citizens, as well as the visitors to the area. We need to make sure that we speak directly to that, especially right here at home, rather than all the things, the amazing things that surround us. And then the last one is to articulate Vancouver's destination identity and brand promise. And it's important for us to try and bring this work home. As I go around the county and meet with different groups, I'm struck by the idea that this alone is something we've struggled with for a long, long time. There's decades of work into the idea of who are we and what's important to us. And we need to try and translate that and articulate that so that everybody starts to march in the same direction. So on the next five slides, I'll detail the work behind that. I am not going to read all the work on these slides. I'll certainly just highlight a few things to give you an idea of the initiatives behind it. These five goals come with 26 total different initiatives. And so on the first goal, develop experiential infrastructure, you'll see six of them. And I wanted to highlight just a couple of them. The first one is develop accessible multicultural events and festivals. It's no secret that Estor Shore Park, the waterfront, and downtown is really, really home of some amazing experiences. The recent Art and Music Festival is a really, really fantastic event, kind of highlighting the different things around downtown. But we need to move those things out into the neighborhoods, out to our citizens, out to where people are living, out to where their interests are, and try and focus on those type of things. And so this work will speak directly to that. We also need to start advocating for visitor-facing venues and facilities. There's a lot of people with a lot of fantastic ideas around here, but as a group, Visit Vancouver has not really gotten too far into those conversations. We now, depending on what facility or what opportunity we're speaking about, will be able to advocate directly towards that. Let's see. And then you can see the remainder of the goals or the initiatives on that particular page. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. Goal number two, engage locals. As I said, this is really an interesting one for us because it's really important for us to pivot our work towards the community that we serve. And so it really needs to make sure that, number 1.2.2 there, where it says, implement communication strategies for value and contribution of tourism. You know, I had that slide earlier where it spoke to the idea of all the tax revenues and things like that. But we really need to speak the citizen's language, help them understand why this is important and so forth. And so we'll be working on those type of things. We won't benchmark that to see how that changes over time. And then 2.3 is a really, really important one to us as well. If you think about your own experience, when you travel to an area, you land at an airport and you hop in a taxi or an Uber or whatever that is, those drivers are frontline hospitality employees. They are the ones that really give you your first impression of where you are, right? And so we need to make sure we can try and empower those people at all different levels, whether it's front desk, whether it's hostess at a restaurant or at a brewery or it's different things like that. They need to know a lot about this area. We can empower them with knowledge. And what they do is they can just translate that. Their enthusiasm about what they do and where they live will kind of show through. And we've all been in those Ubers, where you get this, the driver that is either in a cranky mood, or you get somebody who loves where they live, and they talk to you about all these different things while you're in the car with them and so forth. Those things make impressions, and we think we can kind of nudge that and progress along, if that makes sense. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide, goal three, which is enhance access mobility and ease of movement for everyone. Down at the port, you might be aware that there is a river cruise that shows up once a week. That's 3.2, evaluate future expansions of river cruises. And there's a whole lot of conversation in the market about should we magnify that? Should there be more boats to pull up here? Should this be a home port for all these river cruise boats? And you know, it's one of those things that we, the word evaluate is the most important thing to me there, too. We need to make sure that this is something that aligns with everybody's priorities, that this is the type of thing that will be productive for us here in Vancouver, as well as the rest of the county. We're going to do some feasibility studies. We're going to really make sure that the ROI on those type of things is measured and is appropriate before we just jump into those type of things. And then 3.4, collaborate on wayfinding strategies during and after construction projects. You're probably aware that in Vancouver, they're talking about redeveloping 10 blocks of Main Street. And obviously, with the interstate bridge project, think about the idea of being in a strange place at a strange time, right? We need to make sure that people in real time understand the ways they can move around the destination, whether you're familiar with it as a citizen or resident, or if you're unfamiliar with it as a complete stranger in a strange place. And what we'll do is we'll work to support the work of the different agencies that are doing that type of wayfinding signing. We'll help them with that. Let's go to goal number four. Strengthen outdoor recreation and tourism opportunities for all people. Number 4.1 is a good one for us there. Collaborate with regional organizations driving the visitor economy. If you think about Travel Portland, you think about the organizations like the Columbia Gorge Tourism Alliance. And there's a lot of people doing a lot of amazing work out there. But what we need to do is bring some of that on our side of the river, to the Washington side of the equation. There's really interesting opportunities for us to develop shuttle systems to get people out into the gorge and to move around the area and so forth. One of the things that Councilor Marshall reminds me all the time, which I really sincerely appreciate, is that we are really blessed to have two National Wildlife Refuges that bookmark the county, right, with Ridgefield and Staggerwald Lake. I was having a conversation with a state parks commissioner the other day, who likes to go outside and do her things with her husband, and she remarked, "I was at the Staggerwald Lake National Wildlife Refuge, and I was really surprised to turn around and see a C-Trans bus in the neighborhood right there, like 100 yards away." It strikes me that we should try and engage them to try and get them to bring that stop to the refuge so the people that don't have cars can get there. I was giving this exact presentation yesterday to the downtown stakeholders in Vancouver. And afterwards, in the comments, somebody from C-Trans was in the audience and spoke up and said, "We hear you. We hear that type of feedback from time to time. I will make that happen." So it's those type of encouraging things, those type of conversations, that really were just reflecting the opinion and priorities of others and doing this in a collaborative way. And so hopefully, we'll be able to announce here shortly that we're expanding some of the C-Trans service in that sense. But there's also got to be other opportunities around the county, whether it's Whipple Creek or different things like that, Lackamas Lake. There's got to be places where we can help connect more people to the outdoors. This is just a really good live example of how that can work. And let's go to the goal number five, the fifth goal, the final one. As I mentioned earlier, articulate destination identity and brand promise is a big deal. It's a big lift, and it's bigger than just Visit Vancouver. You may know that in early '22, we relaunched our Visit Vancouver brand, right, with new color schemes and new logos and different things like that. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about our collective sense of place, and it's really hard for us to define. As I said, I'm a relatively new resident, and I struggle with this. I'm not sure if people were to say, "What is it?" I said, "I talk about this moment in time, about how really the energy of this destination is amazing. Everybody all realizes that we're on this precipice of all these amazing things, but we can't really define it." What I'm talking about is, if I were to say to you, New York City, you might say, "Ooh, the Big Apple." If I were to say to you, Seattle, you might say, "Ooh, that's the Emerald City." And there's a lot of different examples of that around the country and destination. Or it could be just a way that people kind of understand their collective sense of pride. We need to define that for us. It's a really interesting thing, if you study those things. The Emerald City is a furniture store campaign from somewhere in Seattle in the 1960s that stuck. We need to find whatever that happens to be for us and help it stick. But to do that, we need to convene people. It's not just about, you know, the tourism economy. It's about how this connects with everybody. So we need to be able to connect local stakeholders and residents to try and figure this out. We need to identify, articulate the characteristics, define the collective sense of place, and then we need to make sure that we're communicating it. And then 5.6 speaks to how that ends up in perpetuity, where you're talking about consistently engaging and making sure that everybody is living the brand promise. I used to work and live in a place called Virginia Beach, Virginia. Their identity is live the life. The idea of, we live in this amazing place. We love living here. Come here, experience it for a minute, and live the life. So it's those type of things that we need to figure out for our area. We're excited about goal number five. Okay, so let's go ahead and shift gears a little bit onto the next slide there about how this all happens. As I mentioned, there's five goals, 26 initiatives. It's a 10-year plan, and I'm just one person, right? So my job is to try and reflect the work. And the idea of all this engagement is now showing us a path forward. So Visit Vancouver certainly can't do everything in all these cases, so we will take on, you know, in general, four different roles. We'll either be advocating for something. We'll convene people to start talking about it. We'll either be supporting the work, or we might be out front leading the charge. In addition to the plan, which is 40 pages long, there's a 10-page implementation matrix. As I said, as we went into this process, I wanted to make sure that I didn't put the thing on a shelf after it's done and let it collect dust. It needs to be a living document. So the matrix speaks to the different roles we'll take, the other organizations that we'll work with, the timelines involved, the metrics that we'll be speaking of, and other considerations along the way. I think of each one of those 26 initiatives needing its own version of a marketing plan, and it needs to have money behind it, too. And so those are the type of things that we will start to undertake in conjunction with the Visit Vancouver board. But more importantly, this Destination Master Plan Steering Committee, as I mentioned, I'll meet with them quarterly to review the progress, to review their priorities, and they will help point me in the right direction, and that's what we'll be doing. And that's kind of the way we'll be moving forward in conjunction with our board, of course, as well. And I think that probably takes us to near the end. Oh, I also want to speak to you about the feedback we've had so far to date. We certainly have met with the steering committee, obviously. Vancouver has a Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. They had a unanimous recommendation to city council that was adopted earlier this month. Vancouver City Council has put it into their strategic plan, their recent update for '23 to '29. The master plan is reflected in there. The Visit Vancouver Board of Directors is unanimous as well, too. The downtown stakeholders, we've received fantastic comments and support there as well, too. And I think with that, I'm ready to take your questions and your comments and your feedback. As I said at the top, this is really an amazing time and amazing place, and I am really, really fortunate to be able to be sitting in the seat that I am, to be able to try and help move this place forward over the next 10 years, and I really look forward to it. I thank you for the opportunity, and again, any questions or anything I can do to help you out?
Well, I love your report. It is just stimulating and really superb. Thank you for continuing the good work that you're doing. As the chair of the Clark County Council, I note that there really is not much mention, if any, of Clark County. And I wonder, what is the role, if any, for Clark County to make a presence in this master plan and in the information that you will be putting out into the public? Because much of the outdoors venues and things that you have mentioned are Clark County, not just Vancouver City. And I wonder if you'd address that a little bit, please?
Chair Bowerman, I remember your attention to detail when you sat on our board, and I appreciate what you pointed out because what you're talking about is a very strong nuance that I was trying to strike today, right? As I mentioned, the plan was paid for entirely by Vancouver Lodging Tax. It was done in conjunction with the city of Vancouver's Economic Development Department. And so it was really, really strong, and their priority is to show that the report kind of reflects that in its own way. At the same time, my board, the steering committee, as well as the city, understand that this is a plan for all of us. And so I believe, like you pointed out, when you talk about different aspects of the plan, the outdoors, heck, yeah, the outdoors is reflected in the county way more than in the city. And that's why I think that, I think if you look through the plan itself, I'll send out a PDF of the goals and initiatives, which really kind of are desensitized to really reflect more of an area plan rather than just a city plan. Because I really look at it this way, and I spoke to it throughout the engagement process with the board, as well as the steering committee and the city. Think of this from the visitor's standpoint. Visitors, no offense, do not pay much attention to city lines, county lines, state lines. What they're here for is an experience. They're here to enjoy themselves in whatever way they're planning on enjoying themselves. And so I also don't think of city and county lines when I think of this work as well. To address your question about how the council can be asked to support this work, I'm definitely not asking the council to try and engage in terms of funding on this project. What I will be doing is engaging private industry to try and help bring this work home. However, I definitely will be leaning into the council, the county council, as well as county agencies to try and help get the work done. And C-Trans is a perfect example of that. We're going to need to work with local and regional agencies to try and help, like the connection of Staggerwald and maybe Whipple Creek and different things like that. We'll need to engage the county. We'll need to engage different agencies all around us to try and bring this home. And I hope that addresses your question because I think it's a very astute comment.
Well, yes, it does, and I thank you for addressing it and continuing to address it as time marches on because it becomes more and more critical as time goes along and as we find the ways for our tourists to engage in the community. So thank you for doing a really good job.
My pleasure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So, thank you for that work session. It's good to have some insight in this one. I've never said on this board in particular, and everyone's got an opinion.
Yeah, no question.
And so, you know, I just want to share mine.
Please.
And some of them are areas that we could increase our partnership with county activity and the city. So this is not meant as criticism. This is just one other constituent of this and user of Vancouver from the East Coast originally and lived in different parts of the world. But so here's, let me start with Lake Vancouver because I've been mildly disappointed in the lack of oversight and inertia by the Vancouver City Council. Because in your venue, I mean, oh my gosh, you know, to some extent, it's a national attraction.
It's a sports venue.
And it's a national attraction for rowing competition. You know, if it was dredged another foot, it would be an international attraction.
Totally agree.
Which includes tourism across the board for each of their events. But you know, to the point you made about Sue Marshall, you know, there's some inertia right now from the wildlife area in Ridgefield and Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, Estuary, to work together, connecting to Lake Vancouver to continue those green spaces and natural places that will not only enhance our environment, but ultimately provides tourism attraction. The, so, you know, the city has done amazing work in building these high-rises right along the river. Got it. It's cute. It's really nice. I mean, I hate it right now going down there trying to go to the restaurant because it takes you half an hour to find a parking space because parking garages aren't quite built yet. But a great job. But you know, what used to be shipbuilding areas, industrial areas, are now really attractive boardwalk kind of venues. But what's missing is, you know, where's our Battery Park? You know, where are those open spaces? You have a lot of open space along the river, along Fort Vancouver, but then you've got Highway 14 and the rail line in between crunching it, and then some industry right along the river. You know, we don't have a world-class marina. Where's our park's place? Fisherman's Wharf, Canary Row. You know, most big cities that are along a river or along an ocean have those attractions. You know, so, and then the encroachment on Pearson, which is owned by the city of Vancouver. I mean, they're not protecting the airspace, and there's a constant pressure. And you know, it's a premier spot.
Yeah, agreed.
And so that's some internal conflicts on what's happening with their own airport. So, you know, I want to partner in every area that we can, and certainly we're trying to, I wouldn't say lead, but maybe lead from the back on Lake Vancouver particularly. And I think there's just so much more that can be done as we, and the focus I would like to see removed from just continuing to obliterate the view of the river by ever-increasing apartment buildings right up against the river. I mean, right from here, we have a view of the river that's pretty de minimis right now because of all this development. All great stuff, not criticism. I'm just saying there should be an ever-increasing view towards a Battery Park. Something where people can walk, not necessarily among restaurants and wine tasting. So anyway, it's just, you know, that's just my view as another tourist, but it's also my view as a councillor trying to make really good forward progress on Lake Vancouver, and it would be and, and it would be really good if, you know, the port and the city really stepped up a little bit more in realizing the value of, uh, of that lake.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I, I sincerely appreciate your comments on, on several levels, you know, because I share your view on Lake Vancouver. From, from our office's standpoint, we realize that's a lost opportunity for all of us because, um, sports event planners need to know that when they plan an event a couple of years in advance, that the lake will be ready for them when they show up, right? And so they realize that in the current state, it's not, uh, amenable to that, right? And so we're missing opportunities daily because of that. And yes, we've, uh, thrown our support towards Lake Vancouver. It's obviously with a lot of different agencies involved and everything like that. But I will kind of try and shift a little bit and say that, that I see, um, how we can help the future of that particular, uh, idea in this sense. Um, I said, ooh, we think of that as a sports venue, um, when I, when you first started mentioning it. And we've engaged with a third-party firm called Airstream Ventures to help us with what we call sports development in the county, um, to try and bring more participatory sports groups, um, for all different reasons, whether it's USA flag football or quad ball, which is the Quidditch sport invented by Harry Potter, or the traditional stuff with, look, you know, with soccer and basketball and different things like that. We believe that this increased energy will start a conversation in the destination, right? The idea of, wow, this is really interesting work that they're doing, but we're missing a place for this to happen. And one of those things could be, wow, we can start compiling all the lost opportunities to be able to say, if we point ourselves and point all of our attention towards Lake Vancouver, maybe there is some energy here that we can, uh, really make some progress. Same thing could be true if this work points us towards the idea of we're missing, like, an indoor venue. And what I would see, like, in my previous work in Virginia, we did this type of work and encouraged enough, uh, energy of this, this sort, where they built an indoor facility there that has 22 volleyball and basketball courts, an articulated bank track. There during the off-season in this beach town, they're running thousand-team track, uh, events through this facility. And what it's designed for is during the week, locals and residents, they use that stuff for their, for their leagues and for their practices and things like that. And then the destination is able to hold the calendars on the weekends for these, uh, out-of-state tournaments and things like that.
One quick question.
Yeah.
You just spurred a thought.
Yeah.
Years ago, we thought there was discussion of building a, a new venue for Symphony.
Yeah, sure.
But where are we at on that? What's?
That's a, that's a really good point. You know, I speak with the folks that are talking about a performing arts center here locally as well too, and they kind of feel like they don't have as much of a voice. This allows us as, uh, organization and as, uh, a board to start facing those things and, and start championing that type of work as well too. And that, that's the idea there. We also, there's some discussion here locally about, uh, converting some, uh, existing properties into having visitor-centered type things there. Um, and that those type of things will be able to advocate for as well too, along the way. Um, but I also think that your opinion is really, really important because as I said, this work 10 years ago is the type of thing we used to do kind of in a vacuum and say, we're sales and marketing professionals and we're just doing our work and sending the messages out of here. But your opinion is really important as a local, right? I was in the bank yesterday doing, well, you know, some deposits and stuff, and as I was leaving, they said, were your ears ringing earlier today? And I said, no, why? They said, we were talking about you. Well, this guy over here was talking about going swimming over at Molten Falls and how crowded it is. And I said, I know the guy who's responsible for that, it's the guy at Visit Vancouver who's telling too many people about Visit, uh, about Molten Falls. And it brings up a really excellent point. You also point out the idea that the waterfront is too crowded. I live right down near there and yeah, I don't go there too much because of how many people are there and I like to have space, right? Our job is to move people throughout the county now. Yes, it's beautiful down there and yes, it's iconic and yes, it's makes for pretty pictures. Right now, our job is to be stewards for a larger, bigger scope, if that makes sense. And this work kind of allows us to, to spread our wings a little bit. I appreciate your comments a lot.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Thanks so much. Thank you very much, Cliff, for, uh, really all the hard work to put this together and presenting it to us today. Uh, it's exciting to think about all of the possibilities that are just really unfolding right now. And I would just, uh, reinforce, you know, the nature and, you know, livability. It's, uh, it's good for the people who are living here now, and it really attracts, uh, businesses here as they want to provide a place that, you know, their employees want to live. So it's important on multiple levels with the economy and connecting, you know, creating shuttle services to some of the outlying places in the county that people can get to. I know La Centre is looking at developing more of their waterfront on the, uh, East Fork for paddling and swimming and, and have it, new restaurants are coming in. So I think whatever I can do to help make any connections out in the, with the small cities because each of them have some, they have the multiple festivals and, you know, it's very, some of them are very quaint and I think, you know, some people may be staying in Vancouver, but it'd be great to spend a day out in, uh, Yakult or La Centre, Ridgefield, any, any one of them. So thanks, thanks for helping to make those connections.
Well, you've made an impression on us, councillor Marshall, for sure. We took a group of, uh, local hotel salespeople and event people and so forth on a tour the other day, and I, I hope I get this correctly, I think it's called the Grab and Feast Farm out in La Centre. And, um, the hotel communities from time to time when they're hosting groups, those groups are like, asking questions about where can we go outside to meet? Where can we go to have our board meetings? Kind of unique, it's outside, it does this, it does that. We took them on a tour. We went out to this farm, we toured around and the, the farmer was so wonderful, he set up, he's got a, you know, a farm table that, you know, he can have, he has an area called the Cathedral of Trees where he can have weddings and for, to be able to take people out of their normal, you know, uh, offices and show them something, um, live and in person was really impressionable. We took our marketing people and the same person has, I think it's five different campsites around his farm. And out there were these like, you know, you hear about these social media influencers running around in their fancy vans. There was somebody out there, right? And it clicks with our marketing people, they start, you know, they are into content. They're like, we can start helping people understand that there is places to go on a farm. You can go stay on a farm, this is a farm experience and we can start marketing towards those things. And it comes because of your continuous encouragement about the, uh, the, all about, everything about the outside. And so I appreciate that a lot.
Great, I, I'm glad you mentioned that. It's Gather and Feast
Gather and Feast.
is the farm.